And everybody remember to mute when you're not speaking. Thank you. Robin, are we ready?
We're, we're good to go. So whenever you're ready to go, we can start.
Great, thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education Regular Public Meeting. Today is January 21st, 2021. This is our meeting held live and on stream. And Mrs. Saradaki, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Bauer?
Here.
Mrs. Boroff?
Here.
Mrs. Brody?
Here.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Here.
Mrs. Soriani?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Linkler?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Dr. Kulikowski?
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you, Mrs. Saradaki. Please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Prior to the start of this meeting, we held our executive session. And in the executive session, we discussed personnel and our legal status report. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is to be discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices located at 512 Cedar Street, Scotch Plains, New Jersey. And such notice was also provided in written notice and forwarded to The Times, The Star-Ledger, the Township Clerk of Scotch Plains, and the Borough Clerk of Fanwood in the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings as adopted March 26, 2020. At this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence to remember teacher and coach Tom Brizniski, who has passed away recently. He was a longtime science teacher and coach at the Scotch Plains Fanwood High School. Thank you. Now, Dr. Mast would like to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. I have a few things that I would like to mention tonight. We did send out a notice that we have been having disruptions with our internet. And I just want to ensure everyone that it has nothing to do with our network capacity. Instead, it has to do with what we first thought was a hardware problem. When we addressed the hardware problem, we recognized that the district is undergoing a cyber attack that is clogging our filter and that's what's making our internet go to go on and off. And with that attack, it has required us to work with our outside partners from DynTech and Cisco and to also contact the authorities of what we need to do to to mitigate the steps. We have a plan in place where it's going to be addressed, we believe, in the next 24 hours. And we're very hopeful that it will be up again steady by Monday. You know, I apologize to the teachers whose teaching has been disrupted under this stressful situation. And I also applaud how you have found creative ways to keep the kids engaged in some way. And I just apologize to the students that their learning was disrupted, but also applaud them how they've cooperated with their teachers to keep it moving on. It's a serious situation. It has happened, you know, across the state to different districts. We have reached out to them too, to find out the most efficient way that they've addressed the problem. And, you know, I'm very confident that it will be resolved soon. But to bring you in tomorrow to, to function with the internet going on and off again, I know is just an exercise in deep frustration. So the good news is we know what we need to do to repair it. And the second announcement I want to say is we started this week a new form of communication to our community. And every time there's a positive case in any of our schools with an individual, it could be a student or a staff member, we are identifying that and sending it out to the whole community. And the reason for that is just so we know the density of cases. So we're not surprised if it's going to cause a class closure or a school closure. We are staying committed to the fact that we're going to keep the district open moving forward. But in order to do that, we have to be flexible in addressing these positive cases. We had a successful collaboration with Cranford Public Schools. They've been operating this way and it's, it's how they've been able to move forward by just keeping the community apprised in this manner. So they, they had shared, you know, their communications and how well it was received with their community so they know exactly what's going on. And, you know, there have been requests for, you know, clear communications and great transparency. So that is why we have made the decision to do that. I know that today there was a communication that went out that was regarding students who are hybrid. And so it doesn't impact that the schools need to open or close, but it's still positive cases within our district. So we're really following the footsteps of Cranford and we're just letting you know everything as we know it. And I think that's it, Dr. Kulikowski.
Thank you, Dr. Mast. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to our instructional updates. First of which is recognition of the Governor Educator of the Year Awards. Dr. Mast, would you like to say a few words about that?
Yes, I would. This is, this is always such a wonderful opportunity to, you know, identify and celebrate our outstanding educators. We know that, you know, you have been selected because you have been so supportive of your students and your families. You come to work in such a caring way. You have had to be more imaginative and creative in this pandemic teaching mode than ever before. But, you know, there have been testimony from, from your colleagues and from the parents and families that you serve that have brought this recognition to you. When we recognize you, you bring great pride to our profession. So I just thank you for, for your commitment to the very important work. We know that being an educator changes and influences the future. And it gives us all great hope for what's to come. We know the power is in our children. So with that, we're going to turn it back to Dr. Kulikowski.
Thank you, Dr. Mast. I'd like to call on the first reader for the Brunner School. If I can please have excuse me, Deborah Brody, if you'll please read for Brunner?
Certainly.
Thank you. Whereas Margaret Lester has been named Brunner Elementary School recipient of the 2020-2021 Governor's Educational Professional of the Year Award. And whereas Margaret Lester is an exceptionally skilled and talented instructional aide who always sees her students in their best light and is dedicated to her students, the staff, and the families with whom she works. And whereas Margaret Lester is a funny, curious, and deeply caring individual that connects with all the people with whom she works on a very deep and meaningful level. And whereas Margaret Lester uses what she learns about her students and what motivates them to build a connection between their interests, passions, and school. And whereas Margaret Lester's greatest strengths are her patience and her ability to promote student I lost my place, I'm sorry. Student independence by knowing just the right amount of support so that students do their best work and can help them do their best work by being supportive, being a supportive voice. And whereas Margaret Lester is a creative and caring classroom aide who has earned the respect and admiration of her students and their parents, her colleagues, and our administrators for her unselfish commitment to her students and the district. Now therefore be it resolved that Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Margaret Lester for being honored as Brunner Elementary School's recipient of the 2020-2021 Governor's Educational Professional of the Year Award and extends to her best wishes for her continued success. Congratulations. I'm sorry, I have more on there. I apologize. Okay. Whereas Rachel Santiago, a gifted and dedicated second grade teacher in the Scotch Plains Fanwood Public Schools, has been named Brunner Elementary School's recipient of the 2020-2021 Governor's Educator of the Year Award. And whereas Raquel Santiago is a talented teacher that has a wonderful ability to truly make each day and every student feel like they are Mrs. Santiago's favorite student. And whereas Raquel Santiago works to make her classroom inclusive of her students' identities, interests, and cultures so that all students feel a strong sense of belonging to the classroom. And whereas Raquel Santiago is loving, loud, vibrant, and energetic. And as, as a result, she captivates her students' imagination in reading, stimulates her curiosity in science, brings out their critical thinking in mathematics, and helps empower their voice in writing. And whereas Raquel Santiago utilizes brain bins to instantly engage her students in creativity when they enter the room. And whereas Raquel Santiago is a creative and caring educator who has earned the respect and admiration of her students and their parents, her colleagues, and our administrators for her unselfish commitment to her students and the district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Raquel Santiago for being honored as Brunner Elementary School's recipient of the 2020-2021 Governor's Education of the Year Award and extends to her best wishes for her continued success. Congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Brody.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Ms. Lester and Ms. Santiago. Next, if we can please have Stephanie for calls.
Okay. Whereas Yasmina Hall has been named JA Cole's Elementary School's recipient of the 2020-21 Governor's Educational Professional of the Year Award. And whereas Yasmina Hall is an exceptional classroom aide who has spent several years, first as a lunch general aide and several years as a classroom aide, working with and supporting learners. And whereas Yasmina Hall has been an asset during virtual learning, leading breakout rooms with small groups of students to provide support. And whereas Yasmina Hall is able to assist students in gaining control of their emotions and approaches each student as an individual, developing positive working relationships with each one. And whereas Yasmina Hall brings a positive encouraging attitude to work every day, she is highly requested by classroom teachers to provide support in the classroom. She is effective when working with students, yet knows when the student is able to work independently. She has a keen ability to read the room and determine where she is most needed. And whereas Yasmina Hall is a creative and caring aide who has earned the respect and admiration of her students and their parents, her colleagues, and our administrators for her unselfish commitment to her students and the district. Now therefore be it resolved that Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Yasmina Hall for being honored as JA Cole's Elementary School's recipient of the 2020-21 Governor's Educational Professional of the Year Award and extends to her best wishes for her continued success. Okay, congratulations. And one more for Coles? Okay. Whereas Lori Travers, a kindergarten teacher in the Scotch Plains Fanwood Public Schools, has been named JA Cole's Elementary School's recipient of the 2020-21 Governor's Educator of the Year Award. And whereas Lori Travers brings a positive outlook and high energy level to school every day and brings the same in her students by dancing, singing, and doing whatever it takes to keep virtual students engaged in instruction. And whereas Lori Travers understands kindergarten students, sees the best in every student, and makes each student feel special, comfortable, and successful in her classroom. Gets to know students outside the classroom to help them get excited about coming to school. And whereas Lori Travers brings her students from knowing only a few letters to reading and writing books. She leads her students to higher levels of comprehension through thoughtful discussions on plot and characters. And whereas Lori Travers demonstrates her love of being part of the Cole's community by being involved outside of the classroom as well. She is a leader with technology skills and is willing to share what she knows. She brings positive energy to her colleagues, regularly meeting with her grade-level team to discuss instruction and brainstorm strategies to meet students' needs and provides advice when facing challenges in their classrooms. She participates in every team building and school climate activity available, including the variety show and annual staff performance at the sing-along. And whereas Lori Travers' impact on students, both academically and emotionally, is unprecedented. Her relationship with staff and parents is commendable. And whereas Lori Travers is a creative and caring educator who has earned the respect and admiration of her students and their parents, her colleagues, and our administrators for her unselfish commitment to her students and the district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Lori Travers for being honored at JA Cole's Elementary School's recipient of the 2020-21 Governor's Educator of the Year Award and extends to her her best wishes for her continued success.
Thank you, Ms. Soriani, and congratulations.
Congratulations.
For all and Ms. Travers. Thank you. Next up, Ms. Williams for Evergreen School.
Good evening. Whereas Darlene Tomasulo, a tenured school nurse in the Scotch Plains Fanwood Public Schools, is Evergreen Elementary School recipient of the 2020-21 Governor's Educational Services Professional of the Year Award. And whereas Darlene Tomasulo is a highly skilled and dedicated school nurse who exemplifies the ethical and intellectual high standards of the nursing profession. And whereas Darlene Tomasulo demonstrates exceptional knowledge and understanding of the health and developmental needs of our students and develops respectful and trusting relationships with students and their families. And whereas Darlene Tomasulo continues to deepen and to enhance her medical expertise and knowledge through continuous professional learning and demonstrates leadership among her nursing colleagues. And whereas Darlene Tomasulo communicates with students, staff, and families in a clear and effective manner and is generous with her time and support. And whereas Darlene Tomasulo demonstrates extensive knowledge of the guidelines, protocols, and regulations related to COVID-19 and has served as a highly regarded professional in her role as the district's lead nurse and collaborative partner with the local and county health departments. And whereas Darlene Tomasulo communicates complex medical and health information clearly and develops effective plans and resolutions based upon the latest health data and guidance. And whereas Darlene Tomasulo is a creative and compassionate school nurse who has earned the respect and admiration of her students, their families, her colleagues, and our administrators for her unwavering dedication to her students and the district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Darlene Tomasulo for being honored as Evergreen Elementary School's recipient of the 2020-2021 Governor's Educational Services Professional of the Year Award and extends her best wishes for her continued success. I have one more. Whereas Marissa Pucci, a tenured teacher in the Scotch Plains Fanwood Public Schools, is Evergreen Elementary School's recipient of the 2020-2021 Governor's Educator of the Year Award. And whereas Marissa Pucci is a highly skilled and dedicated teacher who has created a nurturing environment in her second-grade classroom where her students are motivated and challenged each day. Mrs. Pucci maintains this engaging learning environment in the virtual and hybrid world of the pandemic. And whereas Marissa Pucci continues to lead her students with encouragement and fosters their independence and curiosity through research projects. And whereas Marissa Pucci focuses on the social-emotional well-being of her students by allowing them to express themselves and by demonstrating interest in their thoughts, feelings, and hopes. And whereas Marissa Pucci assists her students in using their home environments to enhance instruction, promoting their critical thinking and creativity. Mrs. Pucci encourages her students to think out of the box to solve challenges. And whereas Marissa Pucci is an insightful and caring educator who models hope and perseverance for her students and has earned the respect and admiration of her students and their parents, her colleagues, and our administrators for her unselfish commitment to her students and the district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Marissa Pucci for being honored as Evergreen Elementary School's recipient of the 2020-2021 Governor's Educator of the Year Award and extends to her best wishes for her continued success.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Congratulations, Ms. Tomasulo and Ms. Pucci. Okay, next. If I can please have Ms. Boroff for McGinn, please?
Really thought I hit that first, sorry. Sorry. Whereas Christine Iarussi, a tenured teacher and counselor in the Scotch Plains Fanwood Public Schools, is McGinn Elementary School's recipient of the 2021 Governor's Educational Service Professional of the Year Award. And whereas Christine Iarussi, a highly skilled and dedicated student assistant specialist and outstanding member of the McGinn community who has cared for our staff, our students, and our families every day through her many creative means, and they cherish their time with her. And whereas Christine Iarussi has provided resources, time on and off the clock, and most importantly, her compassionate, caring personality to help us problem-solve through difficult situations during this challenging past year. And whereas Christine Iarussi is an excellent teacher in her own right and has provided thoughtful socio-emotional lessons and counseling through the district's inner well and through her own classroom. Christine Iarussi provides encouragement, support, and guidance to students and staff providing office hours, and as such, she contributes greatly to McGinn Elementary School. And whereas Christine Iarussi has assisted district supervisors and administrators in planning our pandemic response at the district and school level. She has served on several committees and worked with community members and staff to make us all feel safer and supported. And whereas Christine Iarussi is a creative and caring educator who has earned the respect and admiration of her students and their parents, her colleagues, and our administrators for her unselfish commitment to her students and the district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Christine Iarussi for being honored as McGinn Elementary School's recipient of the 2021 Governor's Educator of the Year Award and extends to her best wishes for her continued success. Congratulations, I have another one. Congratulations. Whereas Karen Sanchez, known fondly at McGinn Elementary School as Señora Sanchez, a tenured teacher in the Scotch Plains Fanwood Public Schools, is McGinn's recipient of the 2021 Governor's Educator of the Year Award. And whereas Señora Sanchez is a vivacious, kind, involved, and very hard-working Spanish teacher dedicated to developing a nurturing, culturally authentic learning environment in her Spanish class, where her students are the captains of their own language proficiency. Señora Sanchez teaches from the heart. She makes rigorous content exciting and accessible for all learners. And whereas Señora Sanchez is an extraordinary teacher whose approach includes a multitude of visuals, songs, dance, and ubiquitous technology. As her nominators explained, her constant integration of technology proves to be both innovative and entertaining for students. Plus, the energy she brings to each and every lesson keeps the students motivated to learn. And whereas Señora Sanchez has integrated technology as long as she's worked at McGinn since 2013, when she already had a Wiki page for students and families to learn more about Spanish language and culture. And Señora Sanchez has taught her colleagues how to use Google Enterprise tools, many programs, and technology tools such as webcams, both officially as recent Google certified coach and enthusiastically on a volunteer basis since her start as a Spanish teacher. And whereas Señora Sanchez is an integral member of the Scotch Plains Fanwood community and heads McGinn's Spanish Club for fourth graders, which focuses on cultures of the Spanish-speaking world and culminates with a day for families to join their students for a fiesta. Señora Sanchez further contributes to the SPF community through her leadership in the Scotch Plains Fanwood Education Association as the chairperson of the Pride Committee. Señora Sanchez has organized countless events that involve and integrate the SPF staff and community, such as the Back to School Night Raffle, Trivia Night, donations to healthcare workers at Overlook Hospital, and water bottle giveaways at all elementary school field days. And whereas Señora Sanchez is dedicated to her own professional learning and is enrolled in a master's degree program in integrated curriculum, she has met the challenge of virtual learning with outstanding leadership and success and has developed how-to videos for our direct curriculum website for teachers. And whereas Señora Sanchez is creative and caring educator who differentiates instruction for all students, where certain students with special needs find special classes overwhelming. Señora Sanchez's class is often the favorite of our neediest learners because they love her vibrant and kind personality and they feel successful attaining her high-level content. Señora Sanchez has earned the respect and admiration of her students and their parents, her colleagues, and our administrators for her unselfish commitment to her students and the district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Señora Sanchez for being honored as McGinn Elementary's Schools recipient of the 2021 Governor's Educator of the Year Award and extends to her best wishes for her continued success. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Boroff. Congratulations, Ms. Iarussi and Señora Sanchez. Thank you. Okay, next. If we can have Ms. Bauer for School One.
Good evening. Congratulations to all the awardees. It's my pleasure to read the resolutions for the School One recipients tonight who are being recognized. Whereas Lisa Bethune has been named School One Elementary School's recipient of the 2020-2021 Governor's Educational Professional of the Year Award. And whereas Lisa Bethune is a positive, hard-working instructional aide that truly has a warm, caring nature. She enters each day with a huge smile and a positive attitude. And whereas Lisa Bethune brings her love of music to motivate her students as well as her kind words and gentle demeanor. She's always ready to assist both students and teachers in any way that she can. And whereas students feel comfortable with opportunities to meet with Mrs. Bethune because she truly respects them. In the virtual environment, she is often meeting with students in breakout rooms and small groups. And whereas Lisa Bethune is a true professional who has dedicated, is dedicated to her students and our district. She continues to find ways to learn about each student's unique qualities and thoughtfully listens as they share. Whereas Lisa Bethune is a warm and compassionate aide who has earned the respect and admiration of her students and their parents, her colleagues, and our administrators for her unselfish commitment to her students and the district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Lisa Bethune for being honored as School One Elementary School's recipient of the 2021 Governor's Educational Professional of the Year Award and extends to her best wishes for her continued success. Congratulations. I would also like to read the resolution for Christina Shay. Whereas Christina Shay, a second-grade teacher in the Scotch Plains Fanwood Public Schools, has been named School One Elementary School's recipient of the 2020-2021 Has been named School One Elementary School's recipient of the 2020-2021 Governor's Educator of the Year Award. And whereas Christina Shay is kind, caring, and comforting to her students and families. Mrs. Shay greets her students each day with a smile and a warm hello. And whereas Christina Shay's exceptional skills in teaching may be second to the connection she makes with her students. And her ability to bring out the best in them. And whereas Christina Shay works collaboratively with her colleagues to plan meaningful lessons. For students both in person and when virtual. And whereas Christina Shay finds ways to meet the unique needs of each of her students. She routinely communicates with colleagues and administration, making sure that she does all that she can. To find ways to support her students. And whereas Christina Shay is a creative and compassionate teacher. Who has earned the respect and admiration of her students, their parents, her colleagues, and our administrators. For her unselfish commitment to her students and the district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Christina Shay. For being honored as School One Elementary School's recipient of the 2020-2021. Governor's Educator of the Year Award and extends to her best wishes for her continued success. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Bauer. Congratulations, Ms. Bethune and Ms. Shay. Next, I'd like to have Karen Mitchell read for Park Middle School.
Right. Jennifer Delo Santos, where are you? Where are you? Say something. Where are you? Jennifer?
Hello.
Hi. Hello, okay. Whereas Jennifer Delo Santos has been named Park Middle School's recipient of the 2020-2021. Governor's Educational Professional of the Year Award. And whereas Jennifer Delo Santos is a hardworking, dedicated, and outstanding classroom aide. Who puts the needs of her students first and foremost consistently going above and beyond in their service. And whereas Jennifer Delo Santos possesses a kind, gentle way. That motivates students to try their best as she focuses on developing a relationship of trust. Helping build their self-confidence and encouraging them to be independent. And whereas Jennifer Delo Santos brightens the hallways of Park Middle School with her warm smile, friendly demeanor. And then enthusiasm to participate in spirit weeks, themed days, and Halloween. Have fun. And whereas Jennifer Delo Santos is a true team player with her fellow aides. Offering suggestions and support to help them implement a strategy to assist their own students. And whereas Jennifer Delo Santos is a creative and caring aide. Who has earned the respect and admiration of her students and their parents, her colleagues, and our administrators. For her unselfish commitment to her students and the district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends. Jennifer Delo Santos for being honored as Park Middle School's recipient of the 2020-2021. Governor's Educational Professional of the Year Award and extends to her best wishes for her continued success. Congratulations. Okay, one more. Susan Vindalyn Hart, where are you? Susan, sorry I'm making you unmute. Susan?
I'm here.
Yay, hi, okay. Whereas Susan Vindalyn Hart, a math explorations teacher in the Scotch Plains Fanwood Public Schools. Has been named Park Middle School's recipient of the 2020-2021 Governor's Educator of the Year Award. And whereas Susan Vindalyn Hart is an innovative educator. Who creates authentic lessons on a daily basis, helping her students make connections between the curriculum and their world. And whereas Susan Vindalyn Hart goes above and beyond for all her students every day. Making time in her busy schedule for whoever may need help, even if it means missing lunch. Thus ensuring her students can work to their highest potential and succeed in all that they do. And whereas Susan Vindalyn Hart is a perpetual lifelong learner. Who seeks to enhance her already strong instructional practices. In an ongoing manner through professional development, personal research, curriculum revision, and collaboration with colleagues. And whereas Susan Vindalyn Hart is the epitome of professionalism, dedication, high standards, and kindness. Quietly walking the halls of Park Middle School, never looking for recognition or praise. Yet inspiring not only her students, but her coworkers as well. She is a trusted colleague that offers guidance and advice for all. Whereas Susan Vindalyn Hart is a creative and caring math explorations teacher. Who has earned the respect and admiration of her students and their parents, her colleagues, and our administrators. For her unselfish commitment to her students and the district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Susan Vindalyn Hart. For being honored as Park Middle School's recipient of the 2020-2021. Governor's Educator of the Year Award and extends to her best wishes for continued success. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell, and congratulations, Ms. Delo Santos and Ms. Vindalyn Hart. Next, I'd like to have Mr. Murray read the resolution for Terrell Middle School, please.
Thank you, Dr. Kulkowski. I'm reading for Terrell Middle School for Sarah Odom. So whereas Sarah Odom, an eighth grade teacher in Scotch Plains Fanwood Public Schools, has been named Terrell Middle School's recipient of the 2021. Governor's Educator of the Year Award. And whereas Sarah Odom is a highly effective teacher whose encouraging demeanor is a beacon of socio emotional. Impetuous goal, hope for all learners, teach touching, teaching and leading by example. And whereas Sarah Odom's ability to connect with students is consistently evident. And her actions let her students know that her classroom is a place where all voices are heard and valued. And all ideas are nurtured and promoted in a safe environment. And whereas Sarah Odom engages her students through their hearts and dreams. So as to cultivate the minds of the children, making profound and ongoing efforts to get to know each student's learning style, extracurricular interests. Areas of academic strength and challenges. And whereas Sarah Odom is a dedicated and talented educator. Who has earned the respect and admiration of her students and their parents, her colleagues, and our administrators. For her unselfish commitment to her students and the district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Sarah Odom. For being honored as Terrell Middle School's recipient of the 2021 Governor's Educator of the Year Award. And extends her best wishes for continued success. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Murray, and congratulations, Ms. Odom. Next, I would like to have Ms. Winkler read for the high school, please.
All right, it's my pleasure. Whereas Jeff Cagle, a tenured mathematics teacher in the Scotch Plains Fanwood Public Schools. Is Scotch Plains Fanwood High School's recipient of the 2020-2021 Governor's Educator of the Year Award. And whereas Jeff Cagle is a highly skilled and dedicated teacher and coach. Who has created a positive and productive environment in his mathematics classes where his students are motivated and challenged to succeed. Jeff Cagle teaches the whole student, taking into consideration not only academics, but also the social and emotional component. And whereas Jeff Cagle facilitates the most challenging mathematics classes, including AP Calculus. And serves as the advisor of the math club. And whereas Jeff Cagle delivers lessons that are rich in content, connecting concepts to the walls beyond the classroom. And shares his love of mathematics with his students. And whereas Jeff Cagle is a dedicated teacher and coach, inspiring his students and athletes to do their very best. He is a three season coach overseeing the programs of cross country, winter, and spring track and field. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education recognizes and commends Jeffrey Cagle. For being honored as Scotch Plains Fanwood High School's recipient of the 2020-2021. Governor's Educator of the Year Award and extends to him best wishes for his continued success. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkler. Congratulations, Mr. Cagle. Now, Ms. Broadbent, I believe you have something special for us?
I do, just give me one moment.
All right.
Did everyone see my screen?
Yes.
So Robin, before you launched that, the principals worked very hard along with Patrice from my office to put together the. The resolutions that were just read. And the educators who are being recognized will be receiving those. But the principals are here tonight and they also worked hard for this tribute. So with that.
Thank you, Dr. Mast.
Good evening, everyone. I am pleased to announce that Mr. Jeff Cagle has been named the Scotch Plains Fanwood High School's Governor Educator of the Year. Mr. Cagle is a veteran member of the mathematics department and a highly respected colleague of the high school faculty and staff. He facilitates two of the most challenging courses offered at the high school, AP Calculus AB and BC. Mr. Cagle is also a three sport coach. Mr. Cagle has always been committed to his students both in the classroom and on the athletic field of play. He coaches cross country as well as winter and spring track and field. Jeff Cagle delivers lessons that are rich in content and depth while connecting with the students. And easily weaving humor and personal experiences into the lessons to enhance teaching and learning. While he pushes his students and athletes beyond their own expectations. He also shows interest and compassion as they grow as students and athletes. Jeff Cagle is unselfish with the time that he gives to his students and to his colleagues. If there was ever a rule model for what constitutes a great educator, Jeffrey Cagle would fit the bill. I extend my congratulations to Mr. Jeff Cagle.
Park Middle School is thrilled to celebrate our two honorees for the Governor Educator of the Year. Susan Vindalyn Hart and Jennifer De Los Santos. Susan Vindalyn Hart. Mrs. Hart is a math explorations teacher at Park Middle School for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students. She's the type of teacher where when you visit her class, you say to yourself, wow, I wish I could go back in time and learn math from her. Mrs. Hart has given so much to the SPF district. She's helped develop our math expo program. She serves as a mentor. Both formally and informally for her peers and so much more. In her many nominations letters, her colleagues describe her as going above and beyond for students. A remarkable teacher and coworker and one of the most hardworking, caring, and kind people I have ever met. We are truly lucky to have Mrs. Hart at Park. Jennifer De Los Santos. Mrs. De Los Santos is an instructional aide at Park. She is known for her calm, caring, and warm demeanor and is highly attuned to her students' needs on a daily basis. Mrs. De Los Santos consistently takes initiative to help students and staff, always going out of her way to go over and above expectations. With her creative Halloween costumes to her amazing handmade masks, Mrs. De Los Santos brings a world of joy and happiness to the hallways of Park. Congratulations to Mrs. Hart and Mrs. De Los Santos.
Mrs. Odom, on behalf of Terrell Middle School, I want to congratulate you on receiving the 2021 New Jersey Governor Educator of the Year Award. It is not surprising to me that you have been selected for this award. You are an outstanding teacher. Your care and compassion for kids is seen every day in all the work that you do. Your strong knowledge of teaching and learning, your deep understanding of the role that literature plays in the life, the life of children. It's quite impressive. And so on behalf of everyone at Terrell Middle School, I want to thank you and congratulate you. Thank you for all that you do every day with the kids of Scotch Plains and Fanwood.
Good evening. My name's Scott Bornek. I'm principal at Howard Runner Elementary School. I just wanted to congratulate our award recipients for the Governor's Educator of the Year. These are really an excellent group of educators who are committed to children. Speaking of excellent educators committed to children, I'm really honored to be able to speak tonight. On behalf of Raquel Santiago, second grade teacher at Runner School, and Maggie Lester, instructional aide at Runner School. Raquel Santiago is energetic, passionate, positive. And really her affect and who she is influences our whole school. Raquel has a way of lighting up rooms when she walks into them, and she truly lights up the whole building each day that she's here with us. Raquel has this incredible ability to make each one of her students feel as though they are her favorite student. In her nomination form, there is a quote that I wanted to share with you. It says that Raquel has a big heart and her students know that they are truly cared for when they're in her class. The nomination goes on to say that every summer before school starts, Raquel calls each of her parents to introduce herself and makes herself available to parents. I think this is the way that she starts on the right foot each year with her classes. And really shows her commitment and care for her kids and for how her parents are feeling. So congratulations, Raquel. Maggie Lester, I would say has the three Cs of being an instructional aide. She's calm, she's caring, and she's deeply committed to her students. Maggie has worked as a self-contained classroom aide. She's worked as a one-to-one instructional aide, and she's worked as a classroom aide. I think Maggie's greatest strength is her ability to connect with kids. She truly makes just a wonderful relationship with the students that she works with. And one of her students actually refers to Ms. Maggie as her best friend. I don't know that you could ask for a better piece of feedback than that from a student. That being said, I will also say that Maggie has the ability to be a warm demander. So she's caring and she's calm and she's committed, but she will get kids to do what they need to do. In Maggie's nomination form, there's a wonderful quote that I want to share with you. And that is that Maggie has patience and even more importantly, she has a wonderful ability to always see children through a positive lens. Where their assets shine through. And these are admired and respected characteristics that Maggie has by all of her colleagues. So congratulations to Maggie.
Good evening. This is Karen Weatherall, the principal of Cole School. Congratulations to all of our educators being recognized this evening. I am thrilled to announce Yasmina Hall as Cole School Educator Service Professional of the Year. Mrs. Hall is an instructional aide at Cole School. Her calm, caring personality make her an asset in the classroom. During virtual learning, Mrs. Hall often leads breakout rooms during Google meets to provide additional instruction to students. This is particularly helpful during Spanish when many of our students need extra support. Mrs. Hall does not need to be asked to help. She's intuitive to students and their needs and can anticipate when her assistance is necessary. Mrs. Hall is an expert in helping students regain control of their emotions and adept at reading and reacting to situations. Mrs. Hall helps but does not hover, supports but does not smother. Congratulations, Mrs. Hall. This honor is well deserved. I am thrilled to introduce Lori Travers as Cole School Educator of the Year. Ms. Travers is a kindergarten teacher and brings an amazing level of energy to school with her every day, even in the virtual environment.
All right, good morning, boys and girls. We're gonna get ready to dance and get ready for a fabulous Friday.
As a kindergarten teacher, she has the daunting task of teaching students to read and she brings them from recognizing letters to putting them together into words. She provides an environment which requires students to think, pushing our five-year-olds to use higher order thinking skills.
Today, we're going to be reading a story called "I Walk With Vanessa." And this story is interesting because it has no words, so we need to use our knowledge of kindness and inclusion to see how we would walk with Vanessa.
She knows and loves her students and recognizes the needs to incorporate movement and to keep learning fun and exciting. Ms. Travers puts on a theatrical performance every day for her students. Her knowledge and ease of use of technology make her even more dynamic than she already is. Students are lucky to have Ms. Travers and we are lucky to have her. Just beginning her career as a teacher, I can't wait to see what else she can accomplish. Congratulations to Mrs. Hall and Ms. Travers. You make Coles proud.
Learned something new today? Have a bright Coles Day!
Good evening, and congratulations to all our district nominees. I am privileged to say a few words this evening about Evergreen School's honorees. Marissa Pucci is a valued member of our second-grade team. She's a dedicated, passionate educator who cares deeply about her students and their families. The nomination for Mrs. Pucci exemplifies what has become her standard. In describing the extreme change that happened to her daughter's second-grade class on March 13, 2020, a parent wrote, "However, other than a physically different space, much of what my daughter loved about Mrs. Pucci's class magically prevailed." Except, it wasn't magic. It was Mrs. Pucci. Students became excited about doing school from home because Mrs. Pucci helped them use their environments to enhance instruction, and all of a sudden, a spoon or Lego became a tool of measurement. Mrs. Pucci was a shining light of positivity and consistency, two things that were hard to find at the beginning of the pandemic. I want to thank you, Marissa, for creating such a safe and engaging learning space for your students that continues today. This environment represents the many hours beyond the school day that are dedicated to enhancing your technical skills and creating a vibrant Google Classroom for learning. Congratulations. The entire Evergreen community is so proud of you. Our second honoree is Mrs. Darlene Thomasulo, who is Evergreen's school nurse, but this year is also serving as our district's lead nurse. I can't begin to tell you the level of trust I have in Mrs. Thomasulo's knowledge and skill. Her medical colleagues also hold this same trust, and her nomination reflects this esteem. In the nomination, it was noted that the World Health Organization declared 2020 the Year of the Nurse. Not only was this so appropriate given the COVID-19 crisis, but it also provided a new opportunity to celebrate and appreciate the nursing community. As the Evergreen School Nurse, Darlene works day in and day out on behalf of our students and staff. This year, she is working evenings and weekends responding to the needs of our entire district. Her knowledge of COVID-19 and the regulations and protocols of our local and state health departments is unparalleled. She is kind, patient, and compassionate when dealing with difficult cases and is able to explain complex medical information in a way that is practical and easily accessible. In any other year, I always relied on her expertise, good sense, and humor. This year, these qualities have been imperative as she has guided all of us through the morass of medical information at our disposal. Darlene, we all thank you so much for your perseverance, fortitude, and reliability during these difficult times. I am so proud to work with you, and we congratulate you on this most worthy award.
Senora Karen Sanchez, as we know and love her at McGinn, is a vivacious, kind, involved, and very hard-working Spanish teacher who makes rigorous content fun and accessible for all learners. Senora Sanchez is an extraordinary teacher of Spanish. Her enthusiastic, invitational approach encourages students to keep trying and to engage in conversation with her and her peers. That approach includes a multitude of visual songs, dances, and ubiquitous technology. As her nominators explained, her constant integration of technology proves to be both innovative and entertaining for students. As the voice of McGinn's morning announcement, Senora Sanchez is an active member of our school and the broader community in her support of students, staff, and families. She heads McGinn's Spanish Club for fourth-grade students, is dedicated to her own professional learning, and teaches staff with her in-person instruction and how-to videos on tech resources in the district. It is an honor to call Senora Sanchez McGinn's 2021 Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Christine Ayarussi is our counselor and an outstanding member of the McGinn community. She cares for our staff, our students, and our families every day through her many creative means, and they cherish their time with her. This past year has been taxing on all of us, and Mrs. Ayarussi has provided resources, time on and off the clock, and most importantly, her compassionate, caring personality to help us problem-solve through difficult situations. As an excellent teacher in her own right, Mrs. Ayarussi provides thoughtful socio-emotional lessons through the district's inner well and through her own Google Classroom. We are so fortunate that Mrs. Ayarussi is our Educational Services Professional of the Year.
Christina Shea is truly just an unbelievable person who is extremely deserving of the Governor Educator of the Year Award. Her calm, warm demeanor allows her students to feel comfortable in any educational setting. She has amazing relationships with her families, consistently communicating with them. Having taught second grade for a number of years at School One, she's made a true difference in the lives of her students. As quoted from one of her nomination letters, "She's a child's champion who gives children the needed love, happiness, and consistency." Christina Shea is more than just a wonderful teacher. She's simply a wonderful person. And when it comes to instructional aides, there is no one better than Lisa Bethune. Lisa is someone who puts others first. She does her job each day with grace and integrity and dedication to her students each and every day. Having worked with students from kindergarten through fourth grade, she has a true knack for assessing a particular child's needs and addressing it. Her compassion and patience goes beyond the classroom and just one of the many reasons why she's deserving as the School One Educational Service Professional of the Year.
Wow, that was a great video. Thank you, Ms. Broadbent. Congratulations to all the award winners for the Governor Educator and Governor's Professional Assistant of the Year. I am just so amazed at all the talent that we have in the district, and I'm so honored to be in your presence this evening. Any of the board members like to say a few words? Ms. Mitchell?
I wanted to congratulate everyone and just say, with all the struggles for the past year, that this is the good stuff, and it's so refreshing and inspiring to hear all the kind words about you and just how lucky my kids are to be around you all and our district is to be around you all. So, thank you for who you are, and thank you for the good news we could share tonight about you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Is there anybody else that would like to say a few words? Mrs. Bauer?
I just wanted to add a second thank you to everyone for changing lives for our students in the district. And I hope that this presentation is going to go on the website, so you can send links to all your friends and family and let them know that how much we appreciate everything you do day in and day out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bauer. Also, thank you for taking the time for coming out this evening, both to the educators and the principals that are here this evening, and PTA Council President as well. Any other comments? Mr. Murray?
Thanks, Dr. Kulikowski. I just want to say thank you because, you know, I truly am amazed at all the accomplishments that this district has done, and all of you have contributed to the success of each of your, each individual schools and the district as a whole. You know, there's no class that any of you were able to take down to how to teach through a pandemic or how to support through a pandemic, but you figured it out, you've worked together, and you've really, really, really made us proud. You know, I know the kids in this district, the students, and even your peers are better for it. So, you know, no matter what happens, I think, you know, keeping your head held high, knowing that every day you're doing something that's making a difference in other students' life and even a peer's life. You know, this pandemic was not something that was planned. This is obviously something that, you know, we've been able to manage through uncharted waters. So, thank you. You know, it's really heartfelt, and we really do appreciate and thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Time for the vote?
Yes. Okay. If there's no more comments, then we've read all the resolutions. Can I have a motion to accept all the resolutions?
So moved.
Second, Murray. Ms. Boroff, thank you for the second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Congratulations, everyone.
So, Dr. Kulikowski, tonight is also a special night because it is the School Board Recognition Month. And we have two things planned to also recognize what our board members has done in always leading and navigating us through the academic years and all of the support that you give to the community and to the students and to the teachers and staff of the district. So, with that, we have yet another video. This one is a little shorter, but we're going to start with that, and then we have a special guest who will speak to the board.
Dr. Mast, can you see my screen?
Yes. Wow, very nice. Thank you.
So, we will be posting that on the website as well, so you could share that with your friends and family. And with that, Regina Gannon?
Good evening, everybody. Before I even get started, I would like to congratulate the award recipients tonight. It is quite well-deserved, and with three children at home learning, I give you immense kudos to what you are doing in the schools. But the reason I'm also here is because I would like to acknowledge our Board of Ed members. But just a little bit of an introduction, I am the PTA President of the Council of Scotch Plains Fanwood. The PTA Council is made up of representatives from each of our eight school PTAs as well as representatives from community-based organizations that serve the needs of young people. Collectively, we try to organize, guide, and mentor one another through the process of running a very busy PTA chapter. As you already know, January is New Jersey's School Board Appreciation Month. This is a time to raise public awareness of the roles and responsibilities of local boards of education and to thank them for their volunteer efforts. In total, New Jersey School Boards oversee 580 school districts, which in turn operate 2,500 public schools and provide educational services to nearly 1.4 million children. School Boards set the policies for our schools and make important decisions affecting curriculum, financing, and staffing. Back in 2010, Scotch Plains Fanwood PTA Council President Gina Giaccona created this tradition of honoring the Board of Education for their time, commitment, energy, and intellect. Even in a virtual setting, we couldn't let the evening go by without acknowledging your hard work. And typically, at this time, we would be handing all nine of you a token gift of our appreciation. But since that isn't possible, we invite you to visit the Board Office in the next few days to pick up your gift. And not to ruin a good surprise, but we felt we should mention that each of the nine gifts was purchased from a local Scotch Plains Fanwood merchant. We feel strongly about supporting our community and thought you'd enjoy soliciting their business, too. So, we thank you. Congratulations, and best of luck in this new year. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Gannon. I greatly appreciate that effort, and thank you so much for taking time out of your busy schedule and with all your responsibilities, as well as your home life, to come recognize the Board of Education members. Just thank you so much for all you do as well. Anybody else like to make a comment?
I just wanted to say thank you and ask Regina to pass it on to the other PTA President because we really do appreciate the partnership, the joint events that we do typically, that we get to do face-to-face and in-person. But they make such a difference in our schools, and the partnership between the Board and the PTAs is so important. So, thank you.
I will pass along that message. Thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you, Mrs. Bauer. Thank you, Ms. Gannon. Is there any other comments? Amy, I can't hear you if you said anything.
I don't know which Amy you were speaking, but I'll go with it because I want to thank everybody and really acknowledge all the amazing educators that we honored in our district in general. Regina, thank you so much. I think we underacknowledge what the PCA does, and so, thank you for your support of us. And what a fun night celebrating, everyone. It's just, it was really, actually, really, I'm not crying, but Amy is crying, but watching that video, all the videos tonight, just, it makes you really proud to be where we are and proud to be SPF proud.
Sure.
Hashtag SPF proud.
Thank you, Mrs. Boroff. Okay, if there are no other comments, thank you again, Mrs. Gannon, for coming out this evening, recognizing the Board.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. Dr. Kulikowski, that ends our instructional update.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mast. And then, moving right along from instructional updates.
And before you do, if our guests on the screen have, would like to exit, feel free. We will not be insulted.
No, but we love all the extra company this evening. So long. Okay, so after instructional update brings us to our first of two public comment sessions. So, if you would like to make a public comment, please go to thespfk12.org for the Zoom login information. In accordance with the Scotch Plains Fanwood Public School Bylaw 0164, 0165, the meeting will be open for 15 minutes for public comments, the maximum of three minutes per speaker. Speakers addressing the superintendent items, business functions, and other board business will be heard first. If time remains, speakers may address other matters. If you would like to make a public comment, please go to spfk12.org for Zoom login information. When it's your turn to speak, please state your full name and the town in which you reside, and if you are representing an organization. Please note, Board members cannot respond regarding concerns of individual students or staff members. Such matters should be addressed with the superintendent's office. So, Ms. Broadbent, I ask you if there's anybody in the queue waiting to be heard.
Yes, Dr. Kulikowski, Sarah August. Hi, Sarah. Please unmute yourself.
Sarah, if you'll please state your full name and the town in which you reside, and if you're representing an organization.
I am Sarah August. I am from Scotch Plains, and I'm representing Real SPF.
Thank you.
All right. I just am here on the first to say how proud I am of the district and how awesome I think a lot has been going. to say how proud I am of the district and how awesome I think a lot has been going. And also to thank Dr. Mast for all she has done, especially her letter understanding what teachers are going through right now. I think it was an incredible move on her part to stand up for teachers who desperately need to get the vaccine to be supported right now. Being in the room with lots of kids and it's spreading so much, I just can't thank her enough. As a teacher, a parent who have kids involved in the health of everybody in our district, I really think it was awesome. And I also really believe that watching the inauguration was a super important thing for our kids to be doing. I truly appreciate that as well. And feel like, you know, my third grader didn't get so much of a chance, but her teacher did a whole lot with Dr. King. She did a whole bunch of work just getting to know what the inauguration was beforehand. So she had to skip out of class and come watch with us because she wanted to see it so badly. I do really appreciate all the district has been doing. It is wonderful. I would love to see a little more consistency because I do have friends whose teachers did not even address Martin Luther King's birthday at all in any way. So I would just like to ask for some consistency to be pushed across that everyone should be talking about African-American history, diversity. Sorry, I have a husband with his friends in the background, but I I just wish for more consistency, but I really am very proud of the district and all they've been doing. That's all.
Thank you very much, Sarah, for these comments. And you're right, there's always much more to do. We did make a very concerted effort to articulate the lessons for the grade levels and support that. And I'm glad that your child was able to benefit.
They loved it. They absolutely loved it. And the conversations in sixth grade were fantastic. So thank you. Sorry. It's a bunch of the dads in the district. Take care.
Thank you for the time to make these comments. I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Sarah August. Ms. Broadbent, is there another person ready to speak?
Yes, Dr. Kulikowski, Amanda Hughes. Hi, Amanda. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, yep. Amanda Hughes, Scotch Plains. And this is mostly regarding Terrell, but kind of everyone. I hope those group of guys are wearing masks inside. Got me a little bit nervous that phone call. So I wanted to just kind of talk about the transparency again. So we heard today, my son finally went to school after not being in school since March. So today was his first day. Really excited. Finally got a seventh grade experience for a day. And of course, right after, get the email that tomorrow there's no school because the internet still. I know this was an issue a few days ago, that there was an internet issue. I'm very confused about why it's not rectified. I did hear, I got on a little bit later and I heard something about someone saying perhaps a cyber attack, but if there was a cyber attack, why was this not said to us in that email? Why is there still lack of transparency with what's going on? And if it is a cyber attack, why do we need hardware? So there's just a lot of confusion. Sorry, confusion still. And I would love it if if you could address that and not, you know, say, thank you for your comment, but really address this with everyone because I know there are a lot of other people wondering the same thing right now. And that's it. But also, I do think I do agree that the teachers have been doing a great job. So thank you to the teachers.
So thank you, Ms. Hughes. So I agree, just to remind everyone, it's really important that you're wearing your masks and that you're maintaining the social distance. That this, the issue with the internet certainly did begin to surface a couple of days ago. And what happened was is the internet connection, the internet connection was intermittent. And initially, as we problem-solved it, we believed it was a piece of hardware and we took the steps to order it while we continued to try to maintain the system running the best that we could. When we made an adjustment to the hardware, we found out that there was a problem beyond the hardware and it was, it was a cyber attack. It was going through the series of problem-solving steps that brought us to that solution. It's quite serious, but fixable. Very unfortunate that, you know, we just opened and now we're having to go to a remote date tomorrow. But, you know, it's best that everyone has reliable internet. I understand that it causes an inconvenience, but it was nothing that we could plan for. So it was, you know, an emergency that came up. And I'm very optimistic that it will be addressed and resolved by Monday. But we will keep everyone posted. The specifics of the solution evolved as I gathered more information. So I wanted to get the information out as soon as possible so parents could could make plans. It wasn't at all intended to be a lack of transparency.
And also, Dr.
We're sort of forming as the time, as it happened.
Right. And Dr. Kulikowski, Dr. Mast, you know, just to confirm for the board and the public, obviously, the board doesn't want to disclose everything that's being done to address cybersecurity issues in the district. So, you know, there is a level of information that I'm sure parents would potentially be more comfortable knowing, but as a district, it's just not possible for us to share. It's not, it's actually, you know, potentially harmful for us to share every single detail about these types of things.
Thank you, Mr. Silvestro. Okay, Robin, do we have another caller?
Yes, our next caller is John Mooney, Dr. Kulikowski.
Thank you.
John, please unmute yourself.
Mr. Mooney, when you're ready, please state your full name, the town in which you reside, and if you're representing an organization. Can't hear you. You have to unmute. You have to unmute.
He did unmute, but somehow it's not coming through.
I'll take him off.
Now I hear you.
Now you can hear. Okay, so John Mooney, Fanwood, tapping the Scotch Plains Fanwood. Do we have any idea who planned the cyber attack on the Scotch Plains Fanwood School District and why? Is it China, the Russians, Westfield? Who might it be?
Well, all of those are possibilities, but going back to our attorney's comment, we really can't disclose any more information than that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mooney.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Dr. Kulikowski, our next caller is Sharada Sukaja. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you for taking the time to take our questions.
Can you please state your full name and the town in which you reside, and if you are representing an organization?
Sure, Sharada Sukaja, Scotch Plains. I'm representing my family. I think, I understand that you cannot share too much about the cyber attack or whatever this is. But I do think that as parents of kids who were logged in today, we should be entitled to know if any of our data was compromised. And if it is, in fact, a cyber attack, and it took us this long to figure out that's what it was, it looks like it might have started impacting us on Tuesday. And three days later, we're just figuring out what it is. How do we think we'll actually be ready by end of day tomorrow to be back in school on Monday?
So so those are good questions. I think what we've been able to do is, you know, really pinpoint the problem and how they're clogging, you know, our access to internet. So it isn't accessing any of our data, or it isn't, it isn't compromising any of the information. It's just, it's just disrupting our internet connection. And based on that, there is, there is a workaround and we've been able to escalate it to a place where it will be repaired. And as I've been informed, it should be, you know, fully operational by Monday.
Thank you, Dr. Mast. Thank you for calling in, Sarita. Ms. Broadbent, do we have anybody else in the queue?
Yes, Dr. Kulikowski, Ashley Tofuga.
Thank you.
Hi, Ashley. Please unmute yourself.
Ashley, when you unmute, please state your full name and the town in which you reside, and if you are representing an organization. If you're speaking, we can't hear you yet. Don't forget to unmute yourself.
Ma'am, if you're using Bluetooth headset or other connection other than the microphone on your computer, that might be part of the issue.
Ms. Tofuga has written in the chat that she will get onto her computer. Her mic is not working and that we should move on.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dr. Kulikowski, at this time, there are no more hands up in the queue.
Okay. Before we go on, if I could just highlight one point, though we will be virtual tomorrow, you know, school still is in session. So it's, you know, it's a disruption for those who are turning back to hybrid, but we're still having school tomorrow.
Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Mast. Okay, then this will conclude this portion of the public comment for now. And hopefully, Ms. Tofuga can log in on the second session. And that will bring us to our committee reports. Anybody have any committee reports this evening?
I have one.
Ms. Brody?
Yeah, so it's the Community Relations. It was actually a very short meeting, but what we did discuss is we discussed the next steps with the District Communication Plan. And at the time of the meeting, they were starting to set up the focus groups for the second level to complete the data gathering. And the focus groups are being composed of the parents, administration, staff, community, and the Board of Ed. And actually, they are starting next week and then they're going to go into February. And the focus groups are also made up of a well-rounded selection of people. Not all happy people, not all mad people, and people in the middle. So hopefully, we'll get a good good information from that. And then we also discussed the communication that was sent for the start of school. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Brody. Is there another report? Ms. Ariani?
Hi, okay. The Curriculum Committee met last week on the 12th. We had three agenda items. Dr. McGary presented on the Green Dot Program, which is a student leadership program around intervention in instances of harassment and violence. It teaches kids, it's a national curriculum that teaches students violence prevention strategies, particularly for bystanders and how to intervene to reduce power-based violence. And the curriculum is going, it's going to be, or was already, Dr. McGary, not sure between then and now, but is taught to ninth graders and by trainers in our district. Liz Nodel Gordon, our Student Assistance Specialist, and Caitlin Franz, District Social Worker, are teaching that curriculum to our ninth graders. Second agenda item was a continuation of, I've been talking over the last few weeks about our Dr. McGary's We Wednesdays as part of the Race Equity and Social Justice efforts in our district. And January 6th, We Wednesday focused on discussing an article, Strategies for Embracing Anti-Racist Work in Our Classrooms. And Dr. McGary pointed out to us that the discussions around race and equity for the We Wednesdays focus on articles by educators so that they can be relatable and give context and credibility to the topic. Sometimes I show them freezing a bit. Is it, is, someone give me a thumbs up if I'm okay?
You're good.
Okay. All right. And okay, also as part of Race Equity and Social Justice efforts, many people have asked the district about what titles in the English and Social Studies curricula reflect diversity. And there's a long list of titles, but just to point out that over the last few years, in each grade, anywhere from four to 11 different titles have been added, just in the last three years specifically, with the intention of reflecting diversity of content and characters and diverse authors. So we have actually a very diverse and robust list of titles. Maybe we can post that somewhere on our website or somewhere that the public can see what specifically those titles are for English and Social Studies by grade level. And the last thing for Social Justice Equity and Diversity is that members of the administration, high school librarian, our Student Assistance Counselor for Equity, April Chestang, Liz McKenna, our English Supervisor, met with members of of Social Justice Matters in our community to talk about engaging in the National African-American Read-In Event, which is the nation's first and oldest event dedicated to diversity in literature. And we wanted to be clear that we don't just focus on reading African-American authors during Black History Month, but we also want to engage in this event and celebrate and honor some of, some of these authors during this time, specifically during Black History Month. And in addition, the Black Student Union is working on an assembly for Black History Month. So those are a few of the efforts just in the last month for social justice, equity, and diversity. And the last thing that we talked about at our meeting was inauguration day lesson planning, and we had our meeting prior to the inauguration. So probably most people have seen our efforts over, you know, the course of the last few days. But we talked about both the opportunities and challenges presented by watching the inauguration for our students, but acknowledged that it moves, has the ability to move forward our curriculum. And students, especially since on a Wednesday, which is a virtual day for high school and middle school students, were able to to watch at least the oaths of office during their lunchtime. But as Dr. Mast mentioned before, social studies teachers at each grade level were, there's a lot of planning around lessons that could be done around the inauguration. And there was, there was very intentional planning. And if, for elementary, they didn't have as much of an opportunity to watch it in real time, maybe, but the teachers did plan lessons just around the historic nature of the inauguration, especially around Vice President Harris. And being the first, you know, African-American and South Southeast Asian and woman in the office. And so all of those three items were informational. No action is to be taken for curriculum at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ariani. Any other reports? Ms. Williams?
Kulikowski?
Yes?
If I might, just to follow up on Ms. Ariani's report is to just acknowledge the leadership of Noel Baxter, our Supervisor of Social Studies, who over the last several weeks has been managing current events and with great sensitivity in terms of bringing those into the classroom for great purposes related to our social studies curriculum. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Baxter for her work.
Well, thank you, Dr. McGary. I appreciate that.
And if I could just add, Dr. McGary, this isn't, I was gonna And if I could just add, Dr. McGary, this isn't, I was gonna save this for good of the order, but just, I think just the creative ways that that current events have been taught. I have a third grader, and I honestly learned three different things from him yesterday. I was counting, just it was fascinating. They learned in his class just about the turnover of the White House from one president to the other, and how many people are involved in that, and how many rooms are in the White House, and you know, just even, just things like that. He was so engaged in all the learning around the transition of power. They did, the teachers did an amazing job. It was, even I learned something from my elementary school student. It was great. So I echo what you said.
Thank you for sharing that, Mrs. Ariani. Mrs. Williams?
Thank you, thank you. Last week, on the 14th, the Wellness and Equity Committee met, and there were a couple agenda items, first being Dr. Kiyati Yoshi. Whether or not we wanted to, well, she was going to come to our task force meeting, so we talked a little bit about her. And she is, she's an educator at Fairleigh Dickinson, and she's also very well-known for creating the Institute for Teaching Diversity and Social Justice, which offers professional development for educators, administrators. And we really talked about her a little bit, which was nice. And then we also unpacked a little bit about the resolution, which you'll hear later on today on Black History Month, and dissecting that so that it could really highlight some of the things that we're working on in the district. And that was for our we committee last week, that included our board members. And then we also have a task force that always meets the date, the, right before the board meeting, and they met, we met today earlier, and we also meet with Social Justice Matters, The Real Parents, Truth, Racial Healing and Transformation. And we had the opportunity to actually meet Dr. Yoshi on our Zoom call, which was which was really a highlight of our meeting. So thank you, Dr. McGary and Leland McGee for bringing her to the forefront. And we had the opportunity to ask her several questions and really dig deep on what she could bring to the community. And mainly, it will be our training for administrators, ongoing training for the staff, including the Board of Ed. And there were no action items at the moment, and you'll be able to hear the resolution on Black History Month later on this evening. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams.
You're welcome.
Dr. Kulikowski?
Yes?
If I might not take credit for bringing Dr. Yoshi to us, that was all Dr. Mast. So thanks to Dr. Mast for bringing Dr. Yoshi for.
Thank you, Dr. Mast.
Thank you for the clarification, Dr. McGary, and Dr. Mast. Mrs. Williams, thank you for your report, taking the time to go to all those extra meetings.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that has a report for committee? Mr. Murray?
Sure, I have a report from Student Activities and Athletics. We had Mr. Miller join us to talk about winter sports. So from an ice hockey perspective, indoor practice began on January 2nd, first ice hockey. On ice practice was on Tuesday, January 4th. We were informed of a COVID positive case on the team, and the team was required to do a 14-day quarantine for close contact until yesterday. So as a result, we canceled the scrimmage and two non-league games. For basketball, basketball started on Monday, January 11th. There's three separate sessions. They're all blocked off by grade. There's a 12th and 11th grade, 10th grade, and new players, and then the ninth grade freshman. Everyone will enter through the same location. Students will have their temperature checked. Coaches will confirm completion of their COVID questionnaire and all the required all will be required to be masked. They will utilize the same gym for the entire week. Gyms will then get a deep clean on Fridays. The tryout period is two days, Monday and Tuesday of that week. The teams will then be reduced to 12 per level. All practices will be certain time slots. Teams will not be intermingled or have any swing players. Bowling lanes, bowling lanes are closed on Monday and Tuesdays. Therefore, practice begin on Wednesday, the 13th. Indoor track and swimming to begin practices on Feb. 1. The competition's beginning on Feb. 15. More information after there's a meeting with the NJISA. Cheerleading is delayed. It'll start January 26th with practice in an isolated practice space. Halftime gym will be cleared. Cheerleaders will cheer, and it'll be live streamed. Cheerleaders will also be recording their cheers, and it'll be broadcasted on Raider News. Wrestling, girls volleyball, and gymnastics is scheduled for March 1st. Mr. Miller also discussed the health and safety guidelines, along with protocols that need to be followed for winter sports. He provided us a copy with that of those guidelines, which went over bus procedures, practice procedures, and contest procedures all in great detail. And then the last item we spoke about was the gate to the path at Old Farm Road. The gate and fencing that was put in was all part of the facilities plan. It was all in conjunction with long-term facilities planning. So the gate will only be locked when there's events being held at the high school. This would be to minimize access during events to a single location and also be good as part of our Good Neighbor policy with the residents in that area. And that concludes my report from Student Activities and Athletics.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Are there any other committee reports to be heard this evening? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to circle back to take that one last caller who was having some audio issues. So Ms. Broadbent, we could get Ms. Tofuga back on the line if she is ready.
For Dr. Kulikowski, yep. Hi, Mr. Tofuga, please unmute yourself.
Thank you, Ashley, for being patient. I hope everything's good. Just state your name and your town, and if you're representing anyone.
Okay, my name is Ashley Tofuga. I live in Fanwood, and I am representing my family, which is three, four children across three schools in the district. There's two, kind of two topics I wanted to touch on. One was the special services, and I know that's Ms. Rabimbas. At the start of this, you know, we were asked, you know, just be patient, just hold on, you know, it's adjustment, you know. And then it's constantly changing since then. Having two children in the special needs program, at some point, we're almost a year in now, when is there going to be, you know, like a more concrete plan for special services or the children? Like, I have one in self-contained, which is great for her, but I have another one who, you know, he's not self-contained, he's in general ed, but he requires services. And the constant changing and the constant updating and the constant variety that he has to go to literally led him to a panic attack where he came home vomiting and had hurt, because he was so confused about which class he was supposed to be in, which day it was, who was there, who wasn't. Like, it just became too much. And also part of the CPAG group on Facebook, and we share a lot. It seems like it's a lot of families struggling with regression and those children who need that, that routine. They may not need anything else, any other services, but they need that routine. This model just doesn't work for them. And it's very difficult. The other topic I want to touch on, I don't know if you want to respond to that first, or if you just want me to lay it out there?
Yeah, put all your speaking out first, and then we'll
Okay, so the other topic was with the planning on basically a broader spectrum. I'll use the lunch program as an example. I know it's not a common thing, and I'll give you a little information on me. I'm a single mother of four. If my 70-year-old father is at the doctor or not here, I can't go get my kids free lunch, because I also work, and I also go to school. So I have all four of them on different schedules. None of them are on the same schedule. And now I have my schedule, and I have to work. And like, the program, when it was delivered, it was great. But now, you know, you have to order everything, so it's like I have to order for each individual child after I fill out the form, the screening form for each individual child. And I just feel like the model is difficult for someone who's a single parent of just one child, who doesn't have a partner to help. And there's not many options for those of us who, who aren't able to take any of the options you offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tofuga. I appreciate you being patient for us to get back to you. Mrs. Rabimbas, do you have anything to comment or?
Dr. Kulikowski, I'll call Mrs. Tofuga to address her concerns, individual concern.
Thank you, Mrs. Rabimbas. And I'm not sure about the ordering lunch for individuals. So I don't know if we can address that at this time, or is that something that we can get back to her? Oh, Mrs. Saradaki?
Yes. We are delivering to the schools, so I don't know if your concern is with the pickup of the lunches or if it's with the ordering. The ordering is necessary so that we don't over-prepare lunches. If you're concerned about the pickup, we do deliver to the schools generally. Tomorrow, with the cyber problem that we're having, we will be delivering the lunches to the homes for anybody who doesn't traditionally pick up at the high school. And we can deliver multiple lunches. So if you're concerned about that, we can, if your child is in on Monday, Tuesday, we can deliver on that Tuesday, we can deliver lunches for your child to take home for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So if you have any concerns, you're welcome to contact me. I might be able to assist you with working out whatever issues that you're having with the ordering.
Thank you, Mrs. Saradaki. I appreciate that. Okay, that was the call we were taking that should have been with the first public comment. So that brings us to letters to the board. And six emails were received by the board from the public, and the appropriate administrator responded. Next is the superintendent's report. Dr. Mast? When you're ready, just unmute.
So for 1S, I move that the Board of Education approves the following out-of-district placements for 2020, 2021 school year. Case number 20-15 and case number 20-16.
Can I have a motion?
Winkler.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkler. Do we have a second?
Second, Sarianni.
Thank you, Ms. Sarianni. Any question or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries.
For 2S, the HIP report, I move that the Board of Education affirms the superintendent's decision in the harassment, intimidation, and bullying case reported in exec session on January 7, 2021. The case was determined not to be HIP.
Okay, can I have a motion?
So moved, Brody.
Thank you, Ms. Brody. Is there a second?
Second, Winkler.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkler. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries.
For 3S, I move that the Board of Education approves the extension of the pilot of the high school block schedule for the 2021, 2022 school year. Though we've been operating under the block schedule, it is somewhat different in the current virtual hybrid model.
Okay, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkler. Thank you, Mr. Murray. Is there any question or discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining?
That's a roll call vote.
Oh, pardon me. Mrs. Saradaki, would you call the roll? Mrs. Winkler?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mrs. Bauer?
Yes.
Mrs. Boroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Brody?
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarianni?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Kulikowski? Yes. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Mrs. Saradaki?
And 4S, I move that the Board of Education approve the proposed 2021, 2022 10-month school calendar.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Second, Winkler.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkler. Any question or discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries.
Moving on to the personnel agenda. I move that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's recommendations for personnel on the personnel report dated January 21, 2021.
Can I have a motion?
So moved, Winkler.
Thank you, Mrs. Boroff. Any question or discussion? Mrs. Saradaki, will you please call the roll? Mrs. Winkler?
Yes.
Mrs. Boroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Bauer?
Yes.
Mrs. Brody?
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarianni?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Dr. Kulikowski? Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Saradaki. And when you're ready, Mrs. Saradaki, we are ready for the business functions.
Okay, I'd like to group these if there's no objection.
No objection. Please proceed.
1BUS, I'm asking the Board to approve the superintendent's recommendations for staff training reimbursements on the report dated January 21st. 2BUS, I'm asking the Board to approve professional services from Camden County Educational Services Commission. These are the services of Lori Perlow. And this is additional services she'll be conducting when she does professional focus groups, which were talked about earlier. And those will take place between January 25th and February 10th. And that is in the amount of $4,750 to conduct those focus groups. 3BUS, I'm asking for the Board to approve the actuarial work required for our audit due to the they are trending down, but the health benefits that we offered as a district to our retirees. And this year, it's just a roll forward, so it's not the significant amount. Every other year, we have to have a full actuarial report done, and on the off years, we can just have a roll-forward calculation from the actuary. So this is no increase in cost. It's $2,500. 4BUS, I'm asking for the contract renewal with prevention specialists in the amount of $250 for the random drug testing, which they've been handling for us. And this is for our bus drivers. And then there's an additional fee this year for something new that the federal clearinghouse put in in the amount of, they're asking $195 to handle that. It is through the federal DOT, and school districts are now required to comply with this process also, and so they'll handle that for us. 5BUS, I'm asking the Board to acknowledge receipt of the district school security and file drill reports for the month of November and the revised report for the month. I'm sorry, the month of December and the revised report for the month of November. The only revisions are a couple of the explanations. After we talked to the state, they gave us some guidance on how to handle a couple of issues because students were in and then out of school. So how the security report should be noted. 6BUS, I'm asking the Board of Education to acknowledge receipt of the Board Secretary reports, the Treasurer of School Fund reports, and the budget adjustments for the month of December. 7BUS, I'm asking the Board to acknowledge receipt of of various disbursement listings from other bank accounts other than our operating account. 8BUS, I'm asking the Board of Education to approve bills for the period of December 12, 2020 to January 15, 2021 in the amount of $3,212,860.48. And that's it. Thank you, Mrs. Saradaki.
Can I have a motion?
So moved, Brody.
Thank you, Mrs. Brody. Is there a second?
Second, Boroff.
Thank you, Mrs. Boroff. Any question or discussion on any of these eight items? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Saradaki.
Thank you.
That brings us to board policies. Mrs. Winkler, are there any policies?
Yes. At this time, I would like to move that the Board approved second and final reading and adoption for policy 2622 on student assessment. It's a policy that I had reported on previously. I'm looking for some more information on it. I believe that there were minor changes that we made to this policy. This was the one where assessments were changed at the state level to happen. I can't remember if it was in grade four or grade five, but it switched from one to the other. And the other changes were minor, I think citation changes.
Yeah, you had mentioned it from previous reading. Okay, so Mrs. Winkler has made her motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bauer. Any other question or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Winkler.
Thank you.
Any new board business? Seeing none, we move on to other board business. OBB is liaison reports. Does anybody have a liaison report, Mrs. Winkler?
Yes, I do. I have a report from the Union County School Boards Association meeting, which I know I saw several of you at. I missed the beginning, so if I'm missing things, I'm hoping one of you will add in later. At the meeting, Larry Feinsad, Dr. Feinsad, who is the executive director of the New Jersey School Boards Association, was there. He wanted to welcome new board members who had just been sworn in for the year. He talked about some legislative developments. He said that there's been CUSAC relief. For those who don't know, CUSAC is the New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum. And it's something that school districts need to fill out every three years, four years, something like that. But the new legislation provides districts relief from this requirement. He talked about helping districts procure COVID-related goods and services. There's Bill A4461 or S2698 that will help districts in the procurement of COVID-related goods and services. It was passed by the Senate on Monday, last week. And then it heads back to the Assembly for concurrence on some of the changes. He talked about budget flexibility. There's another bill, A4310 or S2691, that authorizes school districts to maintain a surplus of 4% this year and next and allows certain line item budget transfers without approval from the Department of Education. The measure has passed the Senate and the Assembly Committee, and it would provide flexibility in this financially challenging time. So at least as of then, we were awaiting approval from the full Assembly. He also talked about school boards' training for boards of education. Every week, the New Jersey School Boards Association presents at least five original training and informational programs. They're broadcast live and then archived for members to view later. They include webinars, Facebook Live programs, online professional development podcasts and videos. So if you're at work or whatever and you miss these, you can go to their website. You can still access these things. He said they conducted 61 webinars on subjects ranging from online learning to internet access for all students. So you know, if you're looking to catch up on that stuff, that's all there. He mentioned that last spring, school boards began producing a series of reports on education during the pandemic. Their most recent report was reopening schools, online learning, and the digital divide. And you can find those things, those reports, all on their website. And that was his report. And then he said, then Christopher Jones came, and he spoke, he gave a legislative update. He talked about the legislation looking at internet service and access to it for all students. He talked about graduation requirements for the class of 2021 being waived. Student growth objectives being waived as part of the teacher evaluations. And that at the state level, they're looking at regionalization, shared services, and other efficiencies of that sort. Then Gwen Thornton, the field services rep, spoke for a bit. Noted that while the graduation requirements were being waived, student assessments are not being waived this year. And then we moved into a session where the different school boards reported out, the members who were there reported about different things that their districts are doing to try to deal with the pandemic and online learning and hybrid learning. Some of the ideas that came up were, one of the districts reported that they did a town hall meeting with their teachers about coming back. Other districts mentioned something called iReady. Other districts talked about parent university and parent academy as things that they are doing for the parents in their district. Some districts are going back to paper newsletters and report cards because parents are so overwhelmed with so much online things. In some districts, they talked about using breakout rooms for kids with modifications and accommodations for aides and that kind of work. One of the districts partnered with a nearby health center for Zoom calls with parents to help with mental health and school refusal. Ray Penny mentioned that Jersey City's Parent Academy is an excellent model. What else? They also mentioned that the sessions from the annual workshop are still available to school board members. They're there for a full year. So if you missed anything and you want to go back and check on it, it's there. Along with the webinars and everything else, if you just go to their website, you can access all that stuff. They also mentioned that their Facebook page is a good resource for some things. And they mentioned that the National School Boards Association, which normally has its annual convention live, has broken it into two separate days. On February 10, they're doing an online session that's going to be their online equity symposium. And everyone can sign up for that. It is free. And I do encourage you to sign up for that. And then they put off their advocacy conference until June 21. That's kind of tentative for now. They're hoping that by then, maybe they can do it live. I guess we'll see. But that is my report from Union County School Boards Association.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkler.
Karen, Dr. Kulakowski, I just wanted to add one thing to the report. Thank you for that report, Amy. One other thing that Dr. Feinsad mentioned, and it was early in the meeting, was that they are conducting a meta-analysis of mental health across the state as a result of the pandemic and the students. And when those results are posted, or if I get any access to that, or if anybody sees any access to that, in his prediction of when it will be available was within a month. So I think that'll be very useful. So if I see it, or if anybody else sees it, keep an eye out. And that'll be useful in planning our work going forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. And thank you, Mrs. Winkler.
I have another report.
Sure.
I also have shared services report. Shared services met this morning. We began with a quick round of introductions since there were several new members of the council. Then there was the police update. Chief Conley said that they are gearing up for the LEED program in our schools. Those of you who remember the DARE program, the LEED program supersedes that. And it is the Law Enforcement Against Drugs program. And they're hoping that they can expand that to include anti-vaping instruction in 7th grade. Then we talked briefly about partnering with them on cyberbullying presentations like we did last year. And they are open to that. We just need to reach out to them and coordinate it. Mayor Lizardo talked about driving around with Chief Conley looking at where illegal flavored nicotine vaping fluid might be sold. And Fanwood is looking at possibly looking into that as well. Apparently, there are some places where they are finding it. Then there was an update from Scotch Plains. We're hearing about vaccines, that there have been some supply issues. There's also a concern that appointments need to be made online. And many of our seniors don't really have access to computers or internet. So they are in the process of setting up a phone number for that so that they can access that. Kane University is still functioning as a testing site several days a week. So they noted that it's important to get tested if you think you may have been exposed. He also mentioned there's a food distribution on Saturday morning, this coming Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m. at the VOTEC in Scotch Plains. So they are scheduled to be there until around 11:00 or 12:00, but they suggested arriving early. So if anybody needs that, please be there. Scotch Plains is getting its budget together for the coming fiscal year. One of their big concerns is with recycling as the costs are continuing to skyrocket. And Chief Conley mentioned that vehicle entry and thefts have been on the rise, especially in the early morning when people are out and they start their cars to warm them up before they leave for work. He suggested lock your doors, keep a spare key with you so you can get back into the car. But that's when they're seeing a lot of cars are disappearing, is when people, in the five minutes or so that people turn it on and then go back into their house to do other things while it warms up. Then we had a Fanwood update. Mayor Marr is on the mend from her COVID exposure. What else? And the administrative offices are under construction, but they hope to be back in them sometime in February. The, there was some discussion about the recycling. In Fanwood, the contract for recycling doesn't end until the summer. But Dan Mason from Jersey Professional Management told us that across the state, they've seen 50% to 100% increases in costs for recycling. So just something to know. I gave an update to them about schools starting up and, well, opening our doors physically for hybrid learning, that we had a couple of isolated cases. We don't have any breakouts at this time, but we do have a few isolated cases. I gave some detail about the HVAC work that was done because they asked about that. And then we had a brief discussion about topics for future discussion. It was suggested that maybe we would look into, Scotch Plains and Fanwood look into sharing court services, which Dan Mason told us has been done in other municipalities. There are some places where up to 10 towns are sharing court services. It was pointed out that Berkeley Heights and New Providence share court services. And I guess that's it. Our next meeting will be on March 4.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkler. Any other reports? Mrs. Williams?
Hi, I substituted for Amy today as she was in shared services for PTA Council. And it was more of a meet and greet, welcoming the new mayor and the new councilwoman, Ellen Zimmerman and Josh Lizardo. It was a short meeting. And we all know what the PTA Council does. They were here earlier today. So thank you again for your hard work in getting everything done. But it was a short meeting. Dr. Mast, do you have anything to add?
No, it was a short meeting. Well, thank you for filling in, Ms. Williams, and in doctoring us for attending. Sorry you couldn't make it, Amy. I know in the past, they've always been very informative.
If I'd known it was going to be that short, I probably could have made it.
Yeah, because they-
No, they're not usually that short.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Williams. Thank you, Dr. Mast. Is there any other report?
Yeah, Karen.
Oh, Mrs. Soriani, go right ahead.
Just, since, I just want to mention that for truth, racial healing, and transformation that I've been mentioning over the last couple of months, that the committee has been working on finalizing our report based on the summer listening tours. And that report has been finalized. Our committee put together a PowerPoint presentation with each of us being part of the presentation. And I believe that it actually, this was just the other day, and I wasn't able to attend because of work, but it was part of, it was livestreamed, I believe, as part of the National Day of Racial Healing and the National TRHT presentation that took place on, that was on the 19th, the day after MLK Day. So that was an exciting piece that our community was represented and the work we're doing in that way. And I believe it's going to go, that was kind of the unveiling of it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, but I believe it's going to now go on, be distributed in some way to our residents so that they can see. And our next meeting upcoming is to discuss ongoing work now, what we're going to do with the recommendations from the listening tours.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Soriani. Any other reports to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on to 2OBB. Any requests to attend workshops? Seeing none, we move on to 3OBB. Black History Month, which is February. And can I have someone to make a motion for the resolution?
So moved, Williams.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. And a second?
Second, Boroff.
Thank you, Mrs. Boroff. So then, Mrs. Williams, will you please read the resolution for us?
Sure.
Thank you.
Let's move that the Board of Education adopts the following resolution. Whereas the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education recognizes the extensive civil, social, academic, and religious contributions made by African-Americans, including residents of Scotch Plains and Fanwood. And whereas the Board further recognizes the vital importance of affording all residents of Scotch Plains and Fanwood, especially young people, the opportunity to study, understand, and celebrate black history globally, nationally, and within the communities of Scotch Plains and Fanwood and the county of Union as a means to ensure that all of our citizens, especially young people, are fully familiar with entire history and diversity of human experience. And whereas the founding organization, the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, has designated the Black Family Representation- has designated the Black Family Representation, Identity and Diversity as a theme for the twenty twenty-one celebration of this month. And whereas the board, through the resolution, reaffirms our district's commitment to the study of the past, present and future contributions of African Americans in our community, in our nation and in the world. And not just in February, but throughout the school year as well as throughout this curriculum. And whereas the board's commitment to such has resulted in the establishment of a racial equity task force. And whereas the board's participation in the Scotch Plains Family Joint Committee for Truth, Racial Healing and Transformation, the district affirms its commitment to collaborating with the community to promote equity. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scotch Plains Family Board of Education hereby proclaims the month of February twenty twenty-one as Black History Month.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. We've had a motion and a second, and a reading of the resolution. All those in favor? I'm sure no one is gonna oppose this. Motion carries. For OBB is School Board Recognition Month. And in the essence of time, I'm gonna make the motion that the board adopts the following resolution, but we're gonna dispense with the reading. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Didn't think so. Motion carries. And five OBB, the twenty twenty-one Board Committee Assignments. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Second, Boroff.
Thank you, Mrs. Boroff. Everybody, it's pretty much the same except for the two changes that were requested. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you for everyone for serving on these various committees. And then we need approval of minutes. We have minutes from December seventeenth, regular board meeting executive session, and December seventeenth, the regular board meeting. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Second, Boroff.
Thank you, Mrs. Boroff. Any question or discussion about these minutes? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you. And this brings us to the second and final public comment session. So if you wanna go make a comment, please go to spfk12.org for the Zoom login information. In accordance with the Scotch Plains Family Public School Bylaw zero one six four, zero one six five, the meeting will be open for fifteen minutes for public comments with a maximum of three minutes per speaker. Speakers addressing superintendent items, business functions, and other board business will be heard first. If time remains, speakers may address other matters. So if you would like to make a public comment, please go to spfk12.org for Zoom login information. When you do come up for your turn, please state your full name and the town in which you reside, and if you are representing an organization. Please note, board members cannot respond regarding concerns of individual students or staff members. Such matters should be addressed by the superintendent's office. And it's, it's best if, when you have something to say, please state everything at the beginning and then we will respond to your comment appropriately so that you get your full time. Ms. Broadbent? Do we have someone?
Laura Benoit has her hand raised. Hi, Laura. Please unmute yourself.
Laura, when you're unmuted, please state your full name and the town in which you reside, and if you are representing an organization.
Hi, good evening. My name's Laura Benoit. I live in Scotch Plains and I'm a real parent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is safe and healthy and doing well. So first off, I just wanted to kind of talk of the, the talks that we've been overhearing in our children's classrooms with regard to Martin Luther King and, you know, election or inauguration and so forth. And, you know, we're very excited to hear like the discussions going on in the classroom. The only question that I have is, like, you know, obviously, we've been paired off with great educators and a great school and so forth, but how do we make sure that we're maintaining consistency across the board? You know, because obviously if the curriculum talks to these things, how are we ensuring that every teacher is consistently teaching on them? Versus maybe one is more passionate about something versus another. So that was my one comment, just kind of saying, especially as we're going into Black History Month with regard to making sure that we're teaching children about Black history. And that obviously it's kind of mandated per se. You know, my personal belief is, you know, I wish there wasn't necessarily a Black History Month because Black history is history in general and should be integrated along with every other history of different cultures and races throughout the school year. But unfortunately, that doesn't happen consistently. So as a result, we have to call out different months of the year. But how do we make sure, you know, like, my children have, have had great educators in the past. And I'm, and this one, this year as well, who have talked on it, but as well, at the same time, I've heard other stories of, you know, children not hearing anything or being dismissed in the class. So how do we help as a district and, and a community to ensure that this is being taught consistently throughout the classroom? The other question that I had was with regard to strategic planning. I know that in previous months, we talked about, I think sometime this year, coming up with dates for the strategic planning. And then last but not least, I think I heard one of the parents talking about, like, you know, need or resources. Is there a spot where parents can reach out to the district if they need additional resources? Whether it's, you know, they're unable to get to the three different schools because they have children spread apart and they can't get to schools for food or whatever the case may be. Is there a resource where they could reach out to the district or the school to ask for additional help? And is there an opportunity for the community and the parents to come together? If we parents wanted to volunteer to help our community members with something as this, whether it's driving and dropping off food or whatever, or whatever the need may be within the district. Thank you.
Ms. Benoit, please remind me of what town you were from?
I'm Benoit and it's Scotch Plains.
Thank you for the correction and Scotch Plains. Thank you. And as always, people can call the superintendent's office if they have, or the business administrator's office, if they have any questions or problems specific to them. That is a great resource right there. So if they are having difficulty picking up the meals or ordering them or what have you, any, any problem in general, that's, that would be one of the steps. If it's not an issue with their child, then of course that, you would touch base with the child's teacher first.
So, just, just regarding the, the consistency of the curriculum, you know, we, we touched upon that topic a little bit earlier. That, you know, in, for, for this particular topic around the inauguration and, and Black History Month, there, there were concerted efforts to provide grade level lesson plans, just so teachers were, you know, pulling from the same resources. Dr. McGarry, do you have more that you'd like to say about that?
Yeah, I think we're always looking at ways to make sure that horizontally, we're articulating across all twenty sections of a grade level. Our supervisors have developed a really good process for that at the K through five level, where teachers are teaching multiple subjects, where we have lead, lead teachers per se in a content area that meet on a regular basis to talk about pacing and to talk about content that they're delivering. And so we've, I think we've taken some good steps in trying to ensure that, that horizontal articulation this year. And our teachers are working really hard and really collaboratively to do that. So is it perfect? Probably not, but we're working hard towards making sure that students aren't missing something because of a choice that a teacher makes. And so we're trying to identify those things that we think are really critical, that all students get to experience.
Thank you, Dr. McGarry. Thank you, Dr. Mast.
And just, just to reinforce what you said, Dr. Kulikowski, if, if there is a parent who, who is struggling with, with that type of piece of, of getting meals and having kids at multiple schools, do, do call my office.
Thank you, Dr. Mast. Ms. Broadbent, is there another caller ready?
Dr. Kulikowski, there are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, well, we'll give them a moment and I'll just remind everyone of some upcoming scheduled meetings. On Thursday, February eighteenth, we'll have our open agenda meeting, starting at seven thirty for exec, eight o'clock for public. At this time, all upcoming meetings are to be determined whether or not we will be in person or virtual. Thursday, February twenty-fifth, regular public meeting. Thursday, March eleventh, open agenda meeting. And Thursday, March twenty-fifth, a regular public meeting. Ms. Broadbent, have any hands gone up?
Yes, Dr. Kulikowski. Melissa Wolf would like to make a comment.
Thank you. Melissa, when you have a chance, please unmute yourself, state your full name and the town in which you reside, and let us know if you are representing an organization.
Hi, yes, thank you. My name is Melissa Wolf and I reside in Scotch Plains.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions about some stuff I heard today. A lot of good things happening. Mrs. Winkler's update from the Union County School Board Association. Sounded like there were a lot of great ideas coming out of a lot of other school districts in the state. Just hoping that we get an update from this group and I'm wondering how we're gonna take some of those best practices and really look to implement them here in our town and our school district. Talked a lot about parent-teacher inclusions, town halls, forums, things that I know the community has raised in, in prior board meetings this year. So really hoping we get some momentum on that as well in the district. And again, with the internet outage and the explains that were happening early in the meeting. Glad we're taking the steps to resolve it. I think it would be good to have a follow-up to the community, especially maybe from the IT people working on it, just to make it clear what has happened and that everyone is safe from a school perspective, a child perspective, data wasn't compromised so that the right messages get to the right members of the community. I mean, as we sit here, there's a lot of speculation going on out there in the internet about what's been happening and, and what's true and what's not true. So just hope we get that clarification after everything's resolved and the kids can get back into school next week. My last question is about the dashboard, the COVID dashboard out on the website. I noticed the last set of data was updated as of January eighth. I think these new emails that are coming are very helpful. Again, taking best practices from other communities who have been able to be successful in these areas. Is this information sort of gonna be incorporated to the dashboard website? And how is it all gonna be explained in the context of both the emails coming out and keeping track of the counts and the numbers, either by school or by week? It looked like the information on the dashboard itself was two or three weeks old at this point. So will it have a new or a different view now that these new emails are coming out to keep the community more informed? That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for logging in, Ms. Wolf. Appreciate it.
So, so just on those three points, we, we will have a follow-up to, to clarify the, the specifics of the, the internet outages. But I, I just do, do wanna emphasize that people do not have to be concerned regarding a data breach. It wasn't that type of attack. It was, it was just many, many accounts entering, trying, trying to enter into our IP addresses and kind of clogging the internet. And so, so it would, it would, it would get full and then it would, it would ease up. And so I, I will have the IT people articulate specifically, you know, what occurred and what, what the next steps were to repair it. But I don't, I don't want our community to be worried that their own data or networks have been compromised. Two, I, I think that Ms. Winkler did list many best practices and, you know, we, we certainly do look to things that other districts that are doing. Other districts also look to us. So, so the idea sharing is something that we're very, very open to and we, we do like to collaborate. That's, that's part of the reason why we attend those meetings. And three, the dashboard, it is my understanding that we update it every week. I, I know that every Friday, I, I, I'd like to see that, that has been done. So if that isn't clear or there's something I'm confusing about that, I'll, I'll take a look at it. And the, the data on the dashboard is a little bit different than the, the daily notifications or they might not be daily, but the, the every incident notification that will be going out. The dashboard talks about how many positive cases we have, but also the number of quarantines that happen too. The, the letters that are being sent out don't, don't speak to the number of quarantines. And we also know that if staff is being quarantined, you know, that, that provides challenges to, to classrooms and schools. So I, I think, just, just in conclusion of that, we'll make sure that the dashboard is, is a weekly update.
Thank you for those classifications, Dr. Mast. Ms. Broadbent, any other participants for public comment?
Dr. Kulikowski, there are no hands raised at this time.
And I'm gonna close this portion of the meeting and move on to remarks for the good of the order. Mrs. Mitchell?
Hello, everybody. I have two quick points. I was going to say the second, but I'll start with it. After Mrs. Wolf's suggestion that we take ideas from other districts. There was one thing I read in my email from the high school about parent time. Parent time. That our district student assistant coordinator is having many appointments on Tuesday evenings, beginning this week from six thirty to eight thirty. You can contact her, Ms. Liz Nodel Gordon. You can contact her at nine oh eight, eight eight nine, seven four nine eight. Or her email is L K N O D E L dash Gordon at spfk12.org. And we spent a lot of time working on the mental health of the students. But we need to, you know, put the mask on ourselves before we help our children. It's a stressful time for everybody, so please take advantage of this incredible opportunity. It says here in the, in the blurb about it that you're invited to schedule some parent time with Liz Nodel Gordon. She will provide you with support in navigating school resources, suggestions of local resources and strategies for motivating students at home. What we're all going through is hard. So like similar to what our district mission is of the triangle with community, parent, kids, let's start working on the parent part of that triangle. It's not only a good model for kids to say, I need to take care of myself and get some outside information. But when the kids see you're happy, it makes, you know, they don't, that burden of, of the parents being stressed or unhappy is not on them as well. So if anybody has any questions about that, feel free to send me an email and I can afford any more information on that that I know or direct you where you need to go. And then something much lighter. This is exciting to see in the Scotch Plains, what's happening monthly. I just wanted to take a minute to shout out to Kohl's. There were three articles about them. Front page about students providing lunch to those in need. And school-sponsored Fall Co-Drive. Well-done students, being servants of the community like that and thinking of others. And also a really interesting article about authors of visiting virtually. There was Dan Gutman from the My Weird School came virtually. And a local author, Kim Davida Smith, who shared her Catch My Kiss series. So smart, smart kids with their books and some really important community work going on. So well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Anybody else for good of the order? I know Park Middle School's Career Day is coming up on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth of this month. Yay, they are still having it. It's gonna be virtual and I can't wait to see how they're gonna pull this one off because I was worried they were gonna miss out on their career fair. So I'm gonna be participating in that on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. And thank you to everybody for reading the resolutions tonight. And thank you to all the principals and everybody that prepared them and made this evening so special for all those governor educator award recipients. That was so nice. And I appreciate PTA Council for coming out and recognizing the board and it's just And it's just it's such a a nice community, and and, you know, it was a really a long meeting, but a very good one tonight. And those videos were just outstanding. If there's any other remarks, then can I have a motion for, oh, Dr. Mast?
Dr. Kulikowski, there was one piece, there was a question that was raised about strategic planning. And that that still is on our radar. We did put those bridge goals in place. We were very much hoping that we could do strategic planning live. And and if we can, it can be done virtually, and we'll be looking to do that in the spring. The spring being the April timeframe.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Mast, for bringing that up. Okay, so then can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved, Deb.
Thank you, Mrs. Brody. And a second?
Second, Boroff.
Thank you, Mrs. Boroff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. See you next meeting, everybody. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Right.